Follow the public hearing and regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, June the 11th, 2019 to order. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me call the board, please.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Walsh?
Here.
Staff has requested that we add a new item 13 to the agenda. Call for a public hearing, 38 Kensington condemnation. Can I have a motion to add that item, please?
Mayor, I move that item number 13 regarding the establishment of a public hearing be added to this evening's agenda.
Second.
Any questions? Could we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion, Perry. I just wanted to take one moment before we move to public discussion, which I'm not expecting a lot of, just to thank everyone who came out last Friday to a wonderful, I think, for me, it was the best event in Pleasant Ridge that I've attended. I mean, obviously, the auction every year is wonderful, but this was a terrific thank you to the staff that put it on. I mean, there was a lot of work going into it. An amazing amount of work behind the scenes. The food was more than I had expected. It was wonderful. I mean, it was terrific food.
Wonderful.
And the weather couldn't have been better to really to show off the patio and even though it took a little while to cut the ribbon, even with Amy's help, but that was because Keith, Keith was fighting me on it. It wasn't my fault. It wasn't my fault. Keith, if you're out there, next time, we'll work on it before.
In rehearse.
But it really was. It was wonderful, and I just wanted to thank everybody who showed up. I wanted to thank all the volunteers who staffed the tables. It was a great turnout all the way around and saw people that I haven't seen at any event, and it was a good, good mix of old and new residents, so again, just one more big thank you. Next, the first item on the agenda, public discussion. Items not on the agenda. Anyone who wants to come forth? Okay. Next item, governmental reports. I'll fight over who goes first. Chief.
Hi, Mayor. Commissioners, first, thank you for a wonderful event and inviting the fire department Friday.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. It's great.
We passed out a lot of information to some of the residents, and we also, with Commissioner Perry's help, got the word out about the home inspections. So we got probably about 1,000 people signed up.
Yay!
Oh, that's great.
So that's great. Also, the event that you invited me to at Axel Brew was really nice. The volunteer appreciation. Yeah, my wife loved it, too, and she said thank you as well. Thanks. The safety tip of the month is going to be cooking safety outdoor, fire pits and such. Try and keep your barbecues 15 feet away from anything combustible, whether it's your garage, water vinyl fence, or the deck. A lot of people I go do burn permits for in Ferndale, they have the burn permit in the right place, but I look back and their deck, they have a propane grill with a 20-pound tank next to their bedroom window.
Great idea.
Kind of dangerous. I know it's a little bit inconvenient, but if you can put it on your driveway or something, that'd be great. So the other thing I wanted to tell you was that last night at the Ferndale council meeting, the Ferndale Fire Department acquired brand-new air packs, SCBA, so we'll be getting a new order of those, and they'll last us another 20 years. They're more high-tech, they're better ergonomically for the firefighters, but they benefit the community as well because they're longer-lasting bottles, so we can, instead of a 30-minute bottle, we now have a 45-minute bottle. They have tracking in case a firefighter goes down, be able to find that person, but it also benefits the community so we can get in there and help people as well. We got thermal imaging masks, so you know what a thermal imaging camera is?
Right.
So we have, some of the masks are thermal imager, so if you're looking down, it's like you're looking at your cheater glasses. You're in the mask, and you look down, you can see the heat signature bodies, or you can see where a fire wall and stuff like that.
Oh, that's great.
So lots of new additions. I think it'll benefit all the communities as well, as well as the firefighters.
That's great.
So thank you again for the good time last night. Hey, thank you for being there.
Yep.
Okay. Chief?
Told me it would be longer. Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Long time no see.
Hey.
It seems like every, every day we're together. Going along with what Chief Pasha said, last week, we had an opportunity to attend Fire Chief Kevin Sullivan's luncheon that the city threw for them in Ferndale. I, myself, the city manager, city clerk, several of you, all attended. It was a nice event. Thank you to City of Ferndale for throwing that and hosting that. It was a nice send-off for him. He's looking better and better, as we can all agree. Remind everyone that it's the warmer season, people are out later in all hours of the night, we're noticing, and several communities around us are starting to see an upswing in the larceny from autos, mostly from unlocked car doors, so please lock your car doors, set your alarm before you go to bed, close your garage doors. And with that being said, last night, one of our neighboring communities, or early this morning, had an incident where a screen was cut in somebody, they may have made entry, we don't know yet, but they removed a purse from there. But scary thought that while you and your family are sleeping at night on ground floor windows, if you sleep upstairs, or you don't have an animal that could alert you, I would suggest closing those windows. If you have regular double hungs, you know, lock them. If you have casements, maybe you can close them far enough where somebody couldn't slip through. Or put your valuables out of sight from an open window so people aren't enticed to maybe remove your item. Today was one of the first really nice days we've had. I hope many residents took that opportunity to cut their grass because we've seen a lot of complaints throughout the city. I know it's rained 28 or 29 the last 35 days. I've cut my grass in the rain, but understand that you're responsible to maintain your lawn. We do come out, we issue warnings, but if it's not done, then we're forced to write you a violation, and if it's still not done, then that, the cutting could be placed on your tax bill with somebody else cutting it, and it's not cheap. So try to maintain that. Last week, as many of you know, Ferndale had a barricaded gunman situation at a senior housing event. Know that two of our officers that were working were involved from the get-go at that, in fact, stopping a bus that they thought the perpetrator might have gotten on, and they were identifying and stopping buses. And then one of our officers was actually one of the ones that made entry and secure in a hallway and maintaining that till other officers got there, and then it turned into a large-scale event where you and I and Sergeant Reed came in. We were there late, late, making sure that our guys were okay and that we could assist Ferndale in any way that we could. We know that we're a lot smaller than them, and we'll need their help a lot more than they usually need ours, but they know that when there is an incident, that we will show up and provide any assistance, whatever, and be professional in that. Although that incident ended sadly and tragically, it was good to know that no innocent victims or people were hurt in that incident, which wound up having probably almost 100 officers from varying agencies there, including two full Oakland County SWAT teams with all their gear and everything else. And I've been in law enforcement a little over 39 years now, I'm a former SWAT and sniper guy, and I've never seen such a display of equipment and tactics and things like that. And I was like awed by what Oakland County has, so know that the residents of Oakland County, you're going to be well protected and taken care of, and shouldn't an incident ever happen like, God forbid, here, but anywhere in the community. It was quite an awesome display. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Good, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We move on. City commission liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Kuziak and Ferndale Public Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Just reviewing the May Ferndale School Board meeting, as usual, Zoe Butters from Ferndale High School gave us the liaison report. She said that the commencement would take place at Ultimate Soccer in Pontiac on Monday, June 3rd. From all accounts, that went very well. She also said the Ferndale High School track team is sending many of its members to the state finals, so I'll look for an update on how they did at the state finals. Sydney Embry from University High School gave her report. She said May 10th was the senior talent and awards show, was very enjoyable and fun. They had a successful prom at Club Venetian in Madison Heights, a lot of fun there. And then to close out her report, she thanked the board for the opportunity to serve as liaison, as this was her last meeting, because she is graduating and moving on. It was very touching. School Board President Jackie Hart thanked both Sydney and Zoe for their service as student liaisons and presented them with gifts of appreciation. So best of luck to Sydney. Zoe will have one more year at Ferndale High School, so best of luck there. Superintendent Bosie then gave the superintendent's excellence awards. To close out the year, she selected three individuals. Lucy Davison from Ferndale Upper, she's a fourth grader. She was described as always persevering. She's on the school leadership team and the news club. She's a role model to all her peers, and she's always looking to help her fellow students and her teachers, and she's a gentle and kind student. So she was recognized. Wonar Burday from Ferndale Middle School is described as a model student, kind and supportive of all her classmates. She's a deep thinker and a black belt in karate, so watch out there. She's thoughtful and always gives her best. And then finally, Cameron Khan from Ferndale High School, he's a leader on both the baseball and the soccer teams. He's always driving to succeed. He's quiet, but leads by example, and he's very determined. The eagle of the month, this goes to the teacher or staff member in the district who most exemplifies the goals district-wide. And this month, it was from University High School, Alex Shamin, Alex Shamin, he's a teacher at UHS. He builds cohesiveness. He's also the athletic director, so he's a teacher and the athletic director, and he builds cohesiveness on the teams. He loves and cares about each child. He seeks them out and checks up on them to make sure they're okay, and he's constantly looking for ways to improve opportunities for his kids. So he was rightfully recognized. There was also a strategic planning working group update. They're giving recommendations at the June 17th regular school board meeting, so that will be the strategic planning work group. Looking forward to hearing from them. And then this was a difficult point of the meeting I wanted to share at our meeting because I think it highlights something that's going on in Michigan and across the nation, and I feel like we need to make sure our representatives know that this is, shouldn't be tolerated. This is, they took a vote, they had to, they were forced by the state of Michigan, the school board was, to take a vote, and this was on NEOLA policy 2410. And this was a policy prohibiting the referral or assistance or any kind of advisory role for anyone on staff in the district for abortion services. The school districts were forced to be compliant by June 19th, or they would lose funding. It was explained that because of this mandate from the state, Ferndale would lose more than $100,000. This was passed by Republican state legislature in 2016, and then it was signed by Governor Snyder. If they wouldn't have passed this, they would have literally had money taken away. One of the school board members called it blatant extortion and said that this was the only way they could pass something like this at the local level, was to threaten to take money away. Several school board members voiced their fierce disagreement with the policy and voiced their commitment to protecting the safety and health of all students and adults in the district, regardless of what the mandate was. So this was a very tense moment in their meeting, and I know many of the school board members agonized over this. It ultimately did pass, four to three. But if you have a feeling on this and you want to reach out to your, to our state representatives, either Robert Wittenberg or Jeremy Moss, and let them know that NEOLA policy 2410 should be reversed as soon as politically practical. So going from there...
Jason, could you just, what is it again? Could you explain?
So this is a policy that was adopted by the state legislature in, I believe it was 2016, and it said that to have a full allotment of funds allocated to your school district, that you would have to adopt this policy that prohibits referral, assistance, or any kind of advisory role for abortion services. So if some, you know, a student or an adult student came to a counselor and asked about something along those lines, if any kind of comment was made, either pro or for, I mean, they didn't even say, I mean, that was how draconian, I feel, the, the language was, even if it's either way, that they would be liable to be fined. They said not only were they forced to agree to this policy or lose funding, but each violation would be upwards of $100,000, so...
And a fine?
Yeah.
So, so what is the status of it?
So it passed in 2016. It's currently state law, and every school district in the state had until June 19, June 2019 to adopt this policy. If they didn't, they were going to lose money. Ferndale School Board put it off as long as possible, voicing their disagreement, and finally, they were advised that they would have to address it one way or the other, and they addressed it at their main meeting. So I, I was taken by this agenda item. I didn't really see why this needed to be mandated, but I felt like the, the school board spoke very eloquently in opposition, and I just wanted to mention it today, if there's people in our community who want to support the school board members, and, and contact either Representative Wittenberg or Senator Jeremy Moss to address this, hopefully with a change in leadership in Lansing, we could turn that one around.
So, I'm sorry, so did the school board adopt it?
Yes.
Okay. To, to keep the funding, even though they oppose it?
And they were very eloquent. I know, we know many of the school board members, they were saying that they didn't want to penalize this $100,000, that would be a teacher they would have to remove from the district or other, you know, expenditures that they wanted to pry the students of. So they said that in adoption, they would just try and reverse this down the, down the road. So in my mentioning it, I just wanted to, maybe if, if people in our community want to support the school board and voice similar letters of opposition, so. Any other questions on that?
No.
All right. I appreciate the time for that. If I could pivot and finish on some really great news, this is Ferndale High School. Last week, the softball and the baseball teams capped off an amazing year at Ferndale High School. Ferndale High School athletes, student athletes captured team district championships in baseball, softball, boys' basketball, wrestling, girls' volleyball, and the football team won not only the district league championship and went to the state playoffs. So it was one of the most successful years athletically for Ferndale High School in very recent memory, so there's a lot of pride there. The end of school year news, Dr. Bosie has a book club for middle school, school students. I got some dates here, but the, it's available online if you're interested. I just want to finish with some graduation information. Ferndale High School, class of 2019, had 164 seniors. The 2019 graduates of FHS were offered $2,691,816 in scholarship money. Out of this, $35,000 was awarded by local clubs, organizations, and generous community and school benefactors. And I know the women's club recently awarded some money, so that's part of that $35,000. Great support from the community. University High School class was 113 seniors. They had 100% graduation rate. That is so awesome. The graduates there received $300,000 in scholarships, including six full rides out of 113 seniors. That's awesome. Tri-County Education Center had 116 students. It was their largest class ever. This is for adult education and other career technical training. Finally, JFK, I didn't know this, but the Ferndale School Board, after the assassination of JFK, created this scholarship where each year, members from the high school are awarded $1,000 and their names are put on a plaque. This year, it was Chloe Farah from Ferndale High School, Carson Keller from Ferndale High School, Jonna Jordan from TCEC, Melvin Mitchell from TCEC, Amari Jordan Toon from University High School, and Dylan Clemmons Midget from University High School. So they were all recognized in the spirit of JFK. And this one, I don't, I think some of our residents have heard of this, great news. Ferndale High School senior Grace Roast was surprised with the Robert A. Shoei Scholarship on Wednesday, June 4th. This scholarship was a full-year, four-ride scholarship administered by Metro Detroit Youth, Youth Clubs, excuse me. Grace was selected from over 240 applicants, and she plans to go to Michigan State University, where she'll double major in math education and psychology. So great congratulations to Grace Roast on that award. And I just wanted to piggyback on, on what Mayor said and Chief, and the Chiefs mentioned about our community celebration on Friday. I know Superintendent Bosie was there, as were Communications Director Bill Good, and they really wanted to say how glad they were to, to be invited and part of the community, and they said, please, reach out to them this summer if you have any questions. You can find their emails, daniabosie@ferndalschools or billgood@ferndalschools. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to recognize the fact that she and Bill were at the, on the 7th, and she was also at our Memorial Day celebration.
Yes.
But standing way in the back, didn't even sit with us to be recognized, she was way in the back, so.
Yeah.
She is, she's wonderful in terms of showing up, so. Great, thank you. A lot going on. Next, Commissioner Perry, planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission, DDA, has not met since we have last met, but our next meeting is going to be Monday, June 24th, right here at City Hall, 7:00 PM, so hopefully you can come join us. I know we had some good news, and I don't know if we're going to share the information about the grant tonight, or if we're going to talk about it later, maybe next month?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, okay. Then we'll be, there's good news to come, so stay tuned. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Scott, historical commission.
Yes, thanks. Hats off to the Historical Commission for putting on a great display at the 100th year celebration. It just looked fantastic. I would encourage everyone, if you have a photo, just bring it over to the, to the police station and drop it into your folder, because it's amazing to see what people find out about their homes just by digging into the folder and seeing what might have been of their home years ago, and imagine 50 years from now, people wanting to be able to do the same thing. And likewise to all of the other junior commissions, the displays were fantastic, even for the Ridge resale folks. It was just a fun evening for everybody and good information for everybody. A couple of dates to share, mark your calendars for August 8th. We have a presentation about how to research historical homes from Mr. Ted Legabell, and I always mispronounce his name, I think I got it right this time. It should be a really fun evening just to learn a little bit about your house. And then also mark your calendar for September 21st. That's our Home and Garden Tour. I hear we've gotten a lot of homes that will be available for the tour this year. I think we're up to six or seven so far.
Wow.
Eight now.
Eight now.
That's awesome.
And then, so it's, should be a very fun event, and it was moved to later in the year so that we catch the fall colors, get out of everybody's other schedules, and should be fun for everybody. And that's all I've got for tonight.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Walsh, recreation commission.
Hi. Monthly movie, The Upside, will be shown on Thursday, June 13th, 12:15 and 6:15. Water row with classes begin this weekend, June 15th, Saturday, register at the front desk with cash or check. Camp begins Monday, June 17th. We're all excited about that. First home meet is Monday, June 17th. The pool closes at 2:45. Please come support the PR Pravos. The meet begins at 5:30. Adult morning swim begins on Monday, Monday morning, morning swim begins on Monday morning. It's June 17th at, it doesn't begin at 6:00 PM if it's the morning swim. Adult swim begins Monday, June 17th at 6:00 PM. Please see the pool schedule online for more info. Fall youth soccer registration begins July 1st. The Ridge is coming, July, September, the week of the 4th. The next rec meeting is Wednesday, July 31st, 7:00 PM. Family celebration, 100 year, I know it was wonderful. I thought that celebration, I'm just saying it again, but it was so great. Everyone had a wonderful time. Everyone represented well. The second, the second big celebration, family friendly, is really all about families and everyone else who wants to come. September, there'll be kid-friendly things. September 7th, is it 2:30?
Two to six.
Two to six.
At Gainsborough.
At Gainsborough. Sorry. I think that's all I have.
Quick question. What time did you say the pool closes on Monday, the 17th for the swim meet?
Closes at 2:45.
Okay.
And the meet begins at 5:30.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We've got five routine items, just, I'm not reading anything, but I'm just acknowledging a resolution recognizing June as gay pride month, and a proclamation recognizing June as immigrant heritage month. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Perry's. Moving along, fiscal year 2019, 2020, combined city budget and the 2019, 2020 millage rates. We talked about that last month, and we have a public hearing this evening. Jim, did you want to make any remarks? Got anything new to tell us?
There is nothing new to tell us.
Nothing new to tell us. Okay. Well, with that, that's my background, I'm going to open the public hearing. It's kind of like Final Jeopardy, I'm just kind of waiting. All right? No comments? Close the public hearing. So now I'll move on to the combined city budget and millage rates. May I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the 2019, 2020 combined city budgets be approved and that the budget resolution be adopted, including the levying of 12.8260 mils for the general fund operating, 2.6804 mils for infrastructure improvements, 1.5306 mils for solid waste and disposal, .31 mils for publicity, .3617 mils for library services, 1.1364 mils for community center complex operations, 1.19 mils for the community center complex debt service, and .6769 mils for park improvements, and .7 mils for police pension stabilization. Be approved as recommended.
That's all. Would you like to read? Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go over a few things really quickly. One of them is, I just wanted to mention, this has been a goal of this commission, and I want to applaud Jim and Amy and everyone at City Hall about getting us into our unrestricted fund balance. This started a few years ago, and I think we were under 20, and our goal was 25 to 30, and this budget, if approved, will bring us up around, projections are 28.3, right around that 30%, which 30% I think is even more than, than we need, but this is kind of like a rainy day. Fund here, as far as, you know, catastrophic incident, the recommendation is two months worth of expenses. I think 28.3 puts us four or five months. So I really want to compliment staff for, for working on that over the years, getting us there. That's a really good spot to be in. Another thing I wanted to mention... Another thing I wanted to mention, I know this was discussed over the past year, and these were contributions that we would make to different organizations. Haven came with a request, Ferndale Youth Assistance traditionally gets a contribution from the city. This year, we're going with Fernd Care and Ferndale Youth Assistance, so I wanted to highlight that as something that, you know, I think is a very valuable contribution to our broader community, so I'm appreciative that that's in the budget this year. One thing I talked to Jim about on the phone and through some emails was just making sure that all our employees, top-down, union, non-union, are being compensated at a level that I think is appropriate, I think the commission would agree. I feel this budget does that, top to bottom. So I really wanted to, you know, again, highlight that, that one of the things that is important is taking care of the people who make our city run, top to bottom, so I'm confident this budget does that. And I'll finish with two things, I know we're going to talk about the grant award, which is very exciting, we'll talk about that later on the agenda. One thing that I've been highlighting, and I know the commission has put on a priorities list, is the pavilion for Gainesboro Park. I know everyone really saw the dynamic space that was created at the funney center with the indoor and the outdoor patio. It's really something I think that this community will benefit from for decades, and so I'm really appreciative that we've taken it upon ourselves as a community to fund that improvement. I think similar funding for a gathering space in Gainesboro is on the horizon, that's something that is budgeted for in this document, so I wanted to highlight that as something that I'm excited about down the road, that we can look forward to in coming years. And finally, I just want to end on this, this is a great document, I advise, and I encourage everyone who's interested to go through this. Again, I've said this before, Jim does a great job of laying out the budget in layman's terms and the numbers, and so this is a great place to kind of dig into if you're curious about the finances for the city. One thing that we've talked about and we've tackled in recent years was our pension obligations, and I believe two or three years ago, we made an adjustment to our pension commitment to our police officers for new hires. And we changed it, we did have a defined benefit that would be earned upon retirement. We changed that to a hybrid plan, which there is a defined benefit portion, there's also a defined, a larger defined contribution element that, so that, what that does effectively is, you know, puts more of the risk on the employee over the years in the retirement. So that was, that was something that this commission was very thoughtful about, and, you know, came to a decision. I still wish we could find room in our budget, or I still wish we could, you know, go back to a defined benefit, that would be my only kind of criticism of this document. Again, this is a change that was made three years ago, two years ago. My hope is that someday we could offer that as a full benefit again to our incoming police officers. One of the things I worry about just down the road is getting people to come be police officers in the city of Pleasant Ridge. We have an outstanding group of dedicated officers right now. I just want to be able to, be able to market the job opportunities for future police officers, so that's really the only thing in this, in this document that I would, you know, want to change down the road, but overall, I think this is, you know, a good statement of our values as a community. I think it really is, you know, financially, it really puts us in a great position. One of the things that you'll notice in the document is our position for taxable value per acre. On page 17 of the document, we only trail Birmingham, really, in our taxable value per acre. So, you know, this continues to be a desirable community to live in, it's well-managed financially, and, yeah, I just want to extend my appreciation to Jim and the entire staff who work on this every year and throughout the year. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Well said. Any other comments? Okay, Amy, can you take the vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Mansker?
Yes. Motion carried, budget is approved. Remove the next item, 2019 Concrete Pavement Repair Program Bid. Jim?
Yes. Every few years, we do a concrete repair project in the city, the last one we did was about three years ago. In the interim years, we spray patch to maintain our, whatever defects are forming in our streets, to maintain those and stop the decay until we get a large enough job to get a concrete contractor in here. So this year is one of the years where we'll be doing concrete repairs. We'll be repairing most of the places where we have concrete, the asphalt spray patch right now, so we'll have streets in good shape again after this. We got one bid in the amount of $110,525. That was a little bit higher, but not dramatically higher than the engineer's estimate, and it's also the same company that did the concrete repair for us three years ago. So we know them, we're comfortable with them, they work closely with our city engineers in Claussen, we had a great experience with them, so they're a good contractor. So this year, we have concrete repairs scheduled for Amherst, Cambridge, Elm Park, Kensington, Maplefield, Oakland Park, Oxford, Millington, Poplar Park, Sullivan, Woodside Park, Woodward Heights, and the community center parking lot.
That's pretty extensive there.
So we'll be all over town. If you see some cones in the street, please don't drive through them, because it's likely that there's no street there. So the recommendation is for the city commission to award the bid for the 2019 pavement repair program contract to Hartwell Cement Company for the total amount of $110,525. Happy to answer any questions, yes.
Are there any questions before we ask for a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Jim, were you saying that the company may be open to doing personal projects too at the end of that?
That's the sidewalk contractor.
Oh, okay, thank you.
This is a separate project.
All right, never mind, thank you.
But yes, the sidewalk contractor.
Will.
Okay, and we'll be, we actually have the pre-con for them scheduled for next week, so we'll hash out those details with them.
Okay.
And we'll push out the information to the residents after we have that nailed down.
When do you expect it to begin?
We set the contract for them to begin after the 4th of July for the sidewalk work, just because we knew that consumers was going to be in destroying things until then.
And they are.
They're doing their best.
And they will restore it, but we wanted, we wanted to give consumers a chance to get in and hopefully be mostly out before the sidewalk guys started, just so that we know what was consumers' fault, that they're responsible for fixing.
So consumers, you think will be done by 4th of July-ish?
That was the plan.
Okay.
Will they actually be, I don't know, but at least they've got a good head start.
Cool.
And they can leave a couple poor potties for the sidewalk. We just got our third, we had a dance.
Oh, that's nice.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the bid for the 2019 Concrete Pavement Repair Program be awarded to Hartwell Cement Company of Oak Park, Michigan, in the amount of $110,525 and zero cents.
Nice local company. Is there support?
Exactly.
Support. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we currently, and thanks, Jim, for the briefing on that, I know we currently have, is it Amherst that is broken up, there was a sewer issue with one of, is there any way, Amherst, that could be front-loaded, because I know a lot of residents, it's actually blocking half the street right now. Is there any kind of relief we can tell the Amherst residents that maybe we could get them first in line there?
Yes, and, yes.
Okay, all right.
That's the never-ending.
Yeah, I know.
Mayor over there.
Yeah, but hopefully we can put an end to it, hopefully. And just, I know it was brought up about the consumers, so, and I know some residents, they are responsible for the seeding, the restoration, if there is any kind of sidewalk or, you know, payment there, they're on the hook for all that.
They are. The one thing I will say that's good about consumers is that they did assign a person there who's worked in the city on the Hanover job, he worked in the city on the Woodward Heights job, they specifically gave him this again because he does know the city.
Okay.
He has been very responsive whenever we've had an issue, so that's good news. He knows the expectations we have here, so that's good news. So hopefully, but we'll see.
They've said to me their goal is to leave it better than they found it.
Oh, there you go.
That's a good goal.
Sounds good.
Yeah, right, yes. They do order mulch and they put it, yeah.
Okay.
We'll see. They haven't, they haven't hit my median yet.
But generally, I mean, on the other jobs, they have, they have lived up to that. I mean, it might, it takes longer than, you know, most residents want it to, of course, but at the end, it's been pretty good.
Okay.
Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Mansker?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item, ballot language to be placed on the ballot of the general election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, regarding a library services millage. Jim?
Yes, we have a library millage this year that's existing, that will expire at the end of this coming budget year, so we need to renew that millage. We have been in contact with Huntington Woods, and the next item on the agenda is a renewal of the contract we have with Huntington Woods. We have five-year contracts that coincide with our five-year millages. So the first thing we need to do is approve the language to put this question on the November ballot, to authorize a renewal of up to 0.5 mils for a period of five years, for the budget years 2020 through 2024 inclusive. If levied in its entirety, this millage would raise an estimated $80,106.64 in 2020. Now, as a practical matter, the millage we have now is a 0.5 mil library millage, but we've never levied 0.5 mils. I think this year we're levying about 0.38 mils, and that's because that's what we need to pay the contract to Huntington Woods. The additional overhead there is really just a safety margin, we have some kind of catastrophic collapse in property values, we've got a contract that we have to pay, so it gives us some extra cushion that we could levy if we really needed to, but in reality, approval of this millage will result in no net change in our millage rate whatsoever, because we would simply continue to levy the amount we need, that 0.38-ish mils, so that would, that would continue. That's all I have, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Pretty straightforward? All right, can I have a motion to approve the language?
Your Honor, I move that the ballot proposal, which reads specifically, shall the city of Pleasant Ridge authorize a renewal of up to .5 mils for the period, for a period of five years, for years 2020 through 2024, inclusive, in excess of its charter authorized tax rate, as reduced by Section 31, Article 9 of the 1963 state constitution, such additional millage to be used to provide library services. If approved and levied in its entirety, the millage would raise an estimated $80,106.64 in 2020. Be approved and forwarded to the Oakland County Clerk for placement on the Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 general election ballot.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion? Let's have a vote, please.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Mansker?
Yes. Language carries. Okay, next item. The agreement for library services between the city of Huntington Woods and the city of Pleasant Ridge. Jim?
Yes, in your packet is a contract, it is essentially unchanged from the existing contract we have with Huntington Woods, we changed a couple of numbers. It's pegged to inflation, so this goes up by the amount that our property taxes go up every year, which is a fair deal. There is a clause in the contract which states that the contract is null and void if, for whatever reason, our library services millage fails. So if that fails, then the contract goes away, and we reconvene and figure out what we're going to do for library services. In terms of background, staff is recommending extending our existing library contract with Huntington Woods, we have three primary reasons. One is at the cost of $43,000 a year, we pay about $20 per person. The average Oakland County community pays about $50 per person for library services, so we get a very cost-effective deal. We're not aware of any resident concerns about the quality of service at the Huntington Woods Library, and further, Huntington Woods is a member of the library network, so with your Huntington Woods library card, any one of our residents has reciprocal use privileges and can use all of the services available at nearby libraries, including Ferndale, Royal Oaks, Southfield, Oak Park, you pick, pretty much all of them are on here, members of that network, so you have access to all the libraries of the region. So if you prefer Ferndale, get your Huntington Woods card, you can go to Ferndale. But Huntington Woods does, does do great work as well.
They do, yeah.
And finally, as noted, we've been with Huntington Woods for 15 years now, and it's been a stable partnership, and it's been a good partnership. They reserve two spaces on their library board for Pleasant Ridge residents, so we do have representation and a voice in the oversight of their library services, and Huntington Woods government in general is a good and friendly partner to us as well, so. There is some value in having established relationships with all of our neighboring communities. We use Royal Oak for water and sewer maintenance, we use Huntington Woods for library services, we're partnering with Ferndale for fire, and some building department services, and we work on a lot of other things with Ferndale Police Dispatch. So it's good to have relationships with all of our surrounding communities, and this is one way that we can continue that with Huntington Woods. So, our requested action is your consideration of the attached contract to continue our relationship with Huntington Woods for another five years, and again, the contract is conditioned on successful renewal of the library services millage at this November's election.
Are there any questions for Jim? Any discussion?
I would just like to say, I agree with everything Jim says, they've been a great partner, I love the fact that we have two board members and representation, it's very important. I was very impressed with the programming they have at Huntington Woods, 15 years, I know my family has participated in a lot of programming, I was very, I know many people, including this commission, were in support of the Drag Queen Story Hour that they had recently, I think that was a great program and a value statement that we share with Huntington Woods. I'm entirely, and as a frequent library user, I'm very satisfied with Huntington Woods as a partner for our library services. I know some residents have mentioned Ferndale being an option for this community, I know many people, when they think of downtown, or, I think we had a poll question about downtown and how Pleasant Ridge residents consider Ferndale as, you know, in auxiliary downtown. So I know there is some sentiment out there for Ferndale. My belief is the 15-year partnership with Huntington Woods is a good and solid one, as has been mentioned, it is at a very good price, it's something that, you know, many in this community value, and we do get it at discount, so I am entirely comfortable renewing this agreement upon approval of the millage in November, this will be something we'll all have to decide as voters, but I'm in full support of going forward with continuation of the agreement, so.
Great, now, I just wanted to add that for those who may be thinking about whether we join up with Ferndale or Huntington Woods, Ferndale District Library has a 3.5 mil cost, so there, to go to Ferndale would be over seven times what we're paying Huntington Woods for the same basic services, so there is a, there is a cost.
They can still use it.
Well, of course, I mean, everything is still the same, just so that people understand, it's not a, it's not that we're just selecting Huntington Woods because we want to select Huntington Woods, we get a tremendous deal, and Jim and I had some discussions five years ago with Ferndale, and it was the budget issues, and getting the biggest, biggest bang for our buck that we went with Huntington Woods to continue a relationship that's that we went with Huntington Woods to continue a relationship that's been a terrific relationship. So just for people, for people's understanding that there is a cost associated if one were to go to Ferndale. And we feel that for our residents, we get the same benefit and we're getting it at a terrific rate. And Huntington Woods is giving us a great deal, so.
And I know that our, our contract is important to Huntington Woods. I know it makes a difference in their library programming. So if we were to leave, it would definitely leave a hole in their budget that would be difficult for them, so.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Huntington Woods.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move the agreement for library services between the city of Huntington Woods and the city of Pleasant Ridge for the term of January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2024. Be approved, conditioned upon the successful renewal of the library services millage to be voted upon at the election to be held Tuesday, November 5th, 2019.
Is there support?
Support.
No further discussion, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is the MDEQ Streetscape Grant Update.
Yes. So you may have heard that the city of Pleasant Ridge was a recipient of a $608,000 grant from the state recently. Yes. It's pretty cool news. This is a Part 319 Non-Point Source Pollution Stormwater Grant. And I guess it was the DEQ, now it's EAGLE. I still haven't memorized exactly what EAGLE stands for, but it used to be the DEQ. And the grant is for streetscape improvements along Woodward. We had a really great PowerPoint that we were going to show that we worked on with the planning commission, but we had some technical difficulties. So maybe we'll show that at another time to give you a flavor of what exactly this all means for the streetscape. But basically, we're going to be able to do a million-dollar streetscape refresh, focused entirely on the east side of Woodward, where we've got all the hardscape. You know, there's a lot of bricks and concrete over there now. We've made the tree planting areas a little bit bigger in recent years by expanding those, but this is going to go far beyond all that. The Pleasant Ridge DDA is going to be the local match, the primary source of that. We pledged $400,000 to match the state's contribution of $608,000. So we're getting a dollar and a half for every dollar we put in. And with that million dollars, we'll be refreshing the streetscape from the southern city boundary, south of Woodward Heights, all the way to 696. And so what is the grant? Well, basically what it is, is we have to capture from the area that runs off to the curb along the east side of Woodward. We have to capture up to a two-inch rainstorm and infiltrate that into the ground. And we identified a number of locations where we can do that. And we'll be putting in rain gardens or possibly even something better than rain gardens. And those are one of the things we have to look at. When we had the concept plan done for this, there was three different alternatives for how we could do this project. The base level one, which didn't really incorporate any kind of green infrastructure, we cost estimated at about $700,000. And that was just introducing a lot more green planting beds, but not really doing infiltration areas. The top of the line, we're doing artistic stormwater, basically infiltration, would be cost estimated, we had about 1.2 to 1.3 million. So our $1 million grant was somewhere in the middle between those. Basic level, I call it basic level stormwater infiltration. But we can also do some artistic elements as well at key points along the corridor. So this will be greener. We'll be capturing the water and diverting it away from the sewer system. We all know the issues we have with stormwater. There's larger, flashier storms now than there used to be. So we get more large rain events, which put a lot of water into the combined sewer system. And it can lead to basement backups because we have a system that was designed for conditions that existed 100 years ago. And things are different now. So by putting the water in the ground and keeping the water out of that stormwater system will help to start to address that issue and make it better, certainly. And make the Woodward corridor look better, too. So this is all on the east side. The west side's already pretty green. So the east side.
Especially east side, yeah.
Yep, exactly. The east side, we'll be focusing on a lot of those improvements. So we'll be, we'll be developing the plans. This is a long process. This is federal money. So there's a contract we have to enter into with the state. That can take up to six months just to get the contract in place. Then you have to go through the plan development and plan approval process with the state. So there, we develop the plans, turn them over to the state. That can take months and months and months. We have a pretty good region engineer here who turns things around pretty quickly, but, you know, dealing with the state, it could be a year before we have approved plans to even begin to start to look at constructing anything. So what I've been telling people is maybe 2020 we'll be having a shovel in the ground. Probably 2021, certainly 2022. So this will be something that we'll be working on for a while, but we'll be doing that with the DDA since it's their money and their area. And I will obviously keep, keep the city commission and the residents updated as well as to what we're planning. So this is exciting.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Very much so.
You think they're going to start building things this way pretty soon? I mean, this won't be an add-on. People will, this is how cities should be built.
Right.
This is so exciting to me to think we're going to do this.
And actually, I am excited about that, too. One of the ways we sold this was, we're in Woodward. It's like Main Street, Michigan. So the ability, we sold this as, let's be a leader and show how this can be done. So maybe other, you know, places can, can say, yeah, and follow suit. And I thought it was interesting, when you looked at the list of entities that won this grant, they were almost all conservation districts. They were focused on buying 100 acres of wetland in the, you know, Leland Open Peninsula, or doing 97 feet of beach restoration. Or, you know, this is a worthy one down in Monroe County, reducing outfalls into the lake that cause the algae problems we have in Lake Erie. So that's great. But we were the only city, we were the only local municipality that won this grant. And I think we won the second highest amount.
Yep.
So I think, and I think the only other one in southeast Michigan was the Monroe. All the rest of them were outstate, out west, up north. Not even mid-Michigan, really. So I think the DEQ is excited about, their eagle is excited about the potential this being sort of a showcase demonstration project for what we can do in urban areas. And then hopefully, what private landowners can start to build in instead of the standard, you know, we'll just throw in a pipe and forget about it approach to stormwater, so. Yeah.
Thanks to everyone. Thanks to the planning and DDA and Jim, thank you. This is great. I can't wait. Sorry we have to wait so long.
Yeah. Now, when you're spending other people's money.
Ah, yeah.
2020 is around the corner.
It'll go faster. Any questions for Jim further?
I just have a few, just out of curiosity. The tree canopy that's existing right now, is that going to be worked around or is that going to be replaced? Or what can we expect with the trees?
It is not going to be replaced.
Okay.
We've been working with Living Lab, who is also the designer for Gainesboro Park. And Living Lab and AEW worked very well together. So we've got the same team for this project. They, they design these concepts around trying to preserve as many of the trees as we can. Now, anytime you're digging around in the ground, you know, we're probably going to impact some of the existing trees. I don't want to promise anybody that we're going to save all of them.
Right.
But we're going to do our best to save as many, majority of them as we can. Because that tree can't be along Woodward. I mean, when you drive up and down Woodward, you almost don't have anywhere else you can walk in the shade on the sidewalk.
No, there's nowhere, I mean, that's.
Pleasant Ridge.
Right.
And those trees don't grow overnight in that condition. So that's, that's a resource that, that I'm committed to saving as best we can.
Good.
So we'll impact that as, as little as we can.
They were really good about Gainesboro, like maintaining that.
Yeah.
As far as the crossings, I know we have a project right now with MDOT and the Woodward Crossing. This, the streetscape grant is not going to really address pedestrian crossings across Woodward, just along Woodward?
Yes. So this is, this is focused on the streetscape. And we've got other projects and grants we're working on that are looking at crosswalks, that are looking at bike and pedestrian infrastructure along Woodward. And how we can build that in. So knowing that we have those things going and this, we'll look to design with this project with an eye towards the recommendations of those other projects as much as we can. So, you know, if by whatever reason we, we are able to somehow do bike lanes on Woodward, we'll, we'll have the concept plans for how we can do that soon. From a grammar we're working on with Ferndale, we'll design the streetscape so that it, you know, that shakes hands with that concept. So if we have to, if we can do the bike lanes, it'll mesh with what we do for the streetscape. So that's one of the things we have to figure out and work out. And if there's ways we can do things to set the stage for some improved crosswalks, great. One of the recommendations I know of, that other grant that we're working on right now, is that the, the stretch from Camborn to Oakland Park is a half a mile. Almost a half a mile, and there's no crosswalks. You can't get across Woodward for that whole stretch. And the rest of the segment from 8 Mile to 696, I mean, when you get to the ditch, you can't jump across it. So it is what it is there. But south of Camborn, the crosswalks are more frequent. So finding one or two or three more places we can get crosswalks in across Woodward is a goal of that project and that grant. We certainly will want to try to set the stage at least, or build some of that into the streetscape grant.
And if part of the goal is to get rid of some of the impervious concrete or kind of the cement or, does that mean we're going to lose parking along Woodward? Or is it?
No.
Okay.
So this will all occur basically behind the existing curbs. We, we know that we have parking constrained situation here. So we can't lose that on-street parking. We can't, we can't reduce our parking volumes. So we'll be preserving what we have. It may be located a little differently and maybe, you know, moved around a little bit, but it'll, it'll all still be there.
Okay.
All right, any other? Okay. Let's move on to the added item 13. Establish a public hearing on Tuesday, July 9th, 2019 at 7:30 PM to consider condemnation of the property commonly known as 38 Kensington, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan 48069. Jim?
Yes. This is an unfortunate step that we sometimes have to take to compel action for problem properties in town. We have a situation at 38 Kensington where a tree fell on the house. And we've been told that there's an insurance company fight over who's paying for this, which, okay. They had pulled some permits for some work under building codes. If there's an open permit, your options are somewhat limited for what you can do from an enforcement standpoint. All of those permits have expired now. So we haven't had any luck getting this property addressed. So we are moving to the next step. Condemnation is a step we can take. This isn't going to be where we condemn and take the property. It's a step we use to threaten demolition of the property. So legally, if the property owner doesn't respond to this, then we could end up demolishing the property and restoring it. We wouldn't take ownership of it, but we would eliminate this problem through that, that method. And usually, you know, in Pleasant Ridge, the value of a structure is far higher. So people typically start to respond and repair the property. If you're at all familiar with 38 Kensington or have driven by, you know that there's some, you know, significant issues with the house that have not been taken care of. We had pictures to show, but you don't have to drive by or take our word for it. So tonight, the, the request is to schedule a public hearing for the July meeting, at which we can then act on condemnation proceedings. The property owner will receive notice that this is occurring and they'll receive instructions for how they can stop this process. As long as they submit a schedule and start to meet those deadlines that they work out with us for remedying these problems, we can call this off. And that's our goal. But this is just something to give us some leverage to get them moving.
Okay, great. All right. Do I have a motion to approve a public hearing?
Mayor, I move that item number 13 regarding the establishment of a public hearing be added to this evening's agenda.
Select it.
No, do I have a, do I have a motion to establish the public?
Your Honor,
Yes.
I move that a public hearing to solicit comments to be scheduled for Tuesday, July 9th at 7:30 PM to consider the condemnation of the property commonly known as 38 Kensington, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan 48069.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further questions? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Here it is. Let's hope the editor starts working so that we don't have to have it. The next item is the city manager's report. Got anything?
Nothing further tonight.
Can I, can I just ask one? You alluded to it and I saw another article on Monday in the Free Press continuing this about road diets, about bike lanes, about East Jefferson. They mentioned the two, two-mile stretch, again. They didn't say anything, they didn't make any promises, but the two-mile stretch from, from 9 Mile or 8 Mile, oh, right.
Right.
Anything that people need to know? I mean, we've kind of, I guess, mentioned it. You guys have been studying, you just alluded to that study.
Right. So last year, we won a, a planning grant from Semcog. And Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge, we had applied for a bike and pedestrian audit, but we kind of massaged it so we could use this to get some concept designs for how we can incorporate better bike infrastructure on Woodward. And there's really only one type of bike infrastructure that's going to be acceptable at all on Woodward, and that's protected bike lanes. Where you have a physical barrier between the travel, the car travel lanes and the bike lanes. Otherwise, don't do it, no one's going to use it. So we've been studying that. And I'm not sure exactly how the newspaper got a hold of that, but they did. But the goal here is that, you know, we know there's a lot of bike infrastructure that's going in in Detroit. And that's great. Getting to and across 696 is a challenge. So we also know that Woodward, south of 696, is a completely different environment than Woodward, north of 696. Down here, traffic counts are 40,000 to 50,000 cars a day on eight lanes of traffic on Woodward. And the rule of thumb is you can move about 10,000 cars a day in one travel lane. So just based on, you know, rules of thumb and everything, we, we probably have some excess capacity on Woodward. You can move the same amount of traffic with six lanes instead of eight. Now, when you get north of 696, your traffic volumes go up to 70,000 or 80,000 cars a day. Things get a lot tougher. But, you know, if you can get to Woodward in 696, you're also at Main Street and Washington. And Royal Oak can pick up the begon and, you know, bike routes can continue off Woodward at that point to connect all the rest of Oakland County and the new bike lanes that they have on Main Street and Claussen and Royal Oak that they've done. And Berkeley is doing it on Coolidge. I know they're having fun right now with the response to that. But, you know, in reality, I'm sure traffic is moving just fine on Main Street. Change is hard. But Birmingham did it on 15 Mile a while ago. So we're seeing more of these pieces in a regional bike network fall into place. But you don't really see the results of this until you have a full network. Because if you ride your bike on this bike lane and then it stops and you can't get to the other ones, you haven't really solved anything. So that's how we're looking at this, is, you know, we have the opportunity here because of the conditions we have with the amount of traffic we have on Woodward, that we might be able to do something on Woodward that, one, creates a better quality of place for our residents along Woodward Avenue. And two, serves as a real kind of nice and important link between these varying bike networks that we have coming into place south of us and north of us. So that's what we're studying right now. The process, again, for this, I mean, are we, we haven't even started to go through the full MDOT checklist to go through a design to get this approved. We're still at the conceptual phase, you know, getting our own plans and ideas in place that will, this will be, you know, this is really step three out of 10. We've done the regional complete streets master plan with the W3 a few years ago. Now we're taking the next step and coming up with our particular design, you know, that we want to pursue. Then we got to go through all the MDOT checklists and work with them to get it approved, to get all that done. And so the other practical concern is Woodward is the pressure release valve for the I-75 construction. So, you know, maybe we need to be willing to wait until that's done to do this on Woodward. Until I-75 is finished, and that's fine. But again, those are the discussions we need to have with Woodward, or with MDOT about Woodward from this point forward, so.
Well, luckily, the newest article didn't make any promises. Didn't even really talk about it too much, so.
Right. The first article was,
More than, yeah.
Could bike lanes come to Woodward in 2020? And basically, the first sentence was, no. The clickbaity headline.
Right, exactly. Exactly. Much better now. And I find, I like three lanes with a, with a turn lane. I think traffic moves much better than four lanes when people are stopping and trying to turn left and stopping traffic, so. Keep them in their lane. All right. If that's it, we move on to other business. Anybody got some other business?
Well, please.
I just got a couple of books.
I see books.
Yeah. So this is, for June, we're doing Isabel. Yeah, so this is, for June, we're doing Isabel Aliande's Japanese Lover. This is a generational story about connections made in World War II, but then, you know, how those relationships transcend the decades. Comes very well reviewed. And I have, as you can tell, I have several copies. So if anybody needs one, please message me. August will be Where the Crawdads Sings. This is by Delia Owens. Both events, both gatherings will be at the community center at 7 o'clock. We always try and do the third Wednesday of every month. And I have to say, for last month's gathering, we were able to move the discussion out on, to the patio. And it was, it was a beautiful evening of, started with a book discussion and then, you know, usually transcends into, you know, how we're going to save the world or something like that. So if you love talking about books or anything else, please join us, third Wednesday of every month. Weather permitting, we'll probably be on the patio at the community center, so.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything?
Yeah, just a quick one. Several months ago, we had some discussion about flags and where we could raise flags. It might be nice for Pleasant Ridge to raise the rainbow flag on the Wellesley flag posts for the month of June, or through the month of June. It's a little, probably a little too soon to do it for this year, but perhaps for future years. So there is a process in place that I think we voted on, I don't know how many months ago, that we might want to take advantage of here.
Good. Excellent.
I'd be willing to make a motion that we, what would be the, you're like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
One thing I've questioned, and I have not had a chance to look into this. The only thing I told Brett that I wasn't sure about is that is a Blue Star memorial.
Okay, exactly.
So I don't know if that's a whole, you know, and it can be a flip here, but any flag goes there. Because that is a memorial location, I don't know. So I offered at the recreation center, you know, certainly, that's a nice one because it's right on Woodward. You know, here, it's kind of like we have the memorial park. You know, the MIA fit in that, but I need to research kind of if there's any. Given that it's a dedicated, Blue Star, anything goes along with that, so.
That's why I say, maybe not this year, we have some research to do, but for future years, it would be great to have one there.
Yes.
Maybe anything?
Yes. So there'll be an election held in Pleasant Ridge Tuesday, November 5. On that ballot, obviously, we voted on the library millage today and two city commission seats. So nominating petitions are available in the city clerk's office from now until July 23 at 4:00 PM. That's when they're due. I have one nominating petition out currently circulating. I'm here Monday through Thursday, 8 to 5. If you have any questions, you can give me a call, you can stop in, we can explain the process. That's about it. They're due July 23.
And I would just encourage anybody, if they're thinking about it, like, if I can do it, you can do it. So if it's something that you're sitting at home thinking about, I mean, it's been one of the most rewarding, you know, periods of my life, being on this commission for the last eight years. So definitely give it some serious thought.
And you can get interviewed by Crystal Proxner. Not such a bad deal. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.